Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for attending today's workshop slash council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present. If you have any cellular device, would you please put it on mute? And if you have to take a phone call, you can take it outside. Thank you. We will have the invocation by Mr. Solomon, Councilmember Solomon, and we will have the pledge of allegiance by me. Please rise.
Father, we want to thank you for this day. This is the day you made, and we thank you for this time, this meeting. We pray your guidance on this council. We pray your wisdom. We thank you for this city, this great city of Colleen. We pray for every citizen that's in this city, Lord, every resident. We pray and we thank you for our soldiers, our military. We pray them, not only for them here, but everywhere, all over the country, Father. We pray for every, all of our military and their families. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. And amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Solomon. Now we will have a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, move that we approve the agenda. Sprint it.
Councilmember Boyd.
Second.
All in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Now we will have presentations. Council, you have three times to speak for three minutes. Madam Secretary.
PR 25008, receive golf course update.
Thank you. Mr. Osborne. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. City council members, city managers, staff and residents, I'm Chris Osborne. I'm the general manager at Stone Tree Golf Club, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on our operations. Today, I'll walk you through the golf course's financial performance for FY24, discuss key facility improvements and agronomic plans for FY25, and highlight the value of our partnership with the Colleen community. Stone Tree staff works closely with the city of Colleen representatives. To keep things running smoothly, we meet every two weeks so we can stay on the same page. We desire to start a collaborative marketing program to get more people from the community out to enjoy the course. So far this year, Stone Tree is doing great. More people are playing than we expected, bringing in extra money, and at the same time, we're spending less than planned. Instead of losing money like we budgeted, we're actually coming out ahead by over $19,000. Things are looking really good. Sorry. Stone Tree has come a long way financially. In 2019, we were losing nearly $245,000 a year. By 2022, we broke even, and last year, we made over $212,000 in profit. This year, we expect to stay in good financial shape with a projected profit of about $60,000. This shows the course is doing much better and moving in the right direction. We're making important upgrades to the facility. Bunkers and irrigation are planned to be improved starting in October of 2025. The clubhouse will get new paint, windows and siding with work starting in late spring. We've already added new range machine and replaced the controller panel on the irrigation system. Keeping the course in great shape for players is our main goal. Through our agronomic plan, we're taking steps to keep the course in great shape. This includes aerating the greens twice a year to keep from them getting too hard and regularly adding light layers of sand to keep the grass healthy. Vertic cutting greens every three weeks to remove thatch and old plant material. We also apply treatments each month to help the grass hold water, grow better and keep weeds under control. Plus, we continue removing trees, removing and trimming trees to let in more sunlight. All of this will make the course better for the players and easier to maintain. I'm sorry, I missed that. Sorry about that. Does anybody need to read over that? I apologize. Let him go. There we go. We're working hard to bring more people from the community to the course. We're hosting fun events like women's golf, family golf, and promoting holidays, holiday celebrations like Easter, the Fourth of July and Mother's Day. We're also starting programs to help kids learn golf by reestablishing the First Tee Program and the Colleen Junior Golf Association. These activities make the course more welcoming, bringing in more visitors and help keep Stone Tree a great place for the community. Nope, I went one too far. We plan to strengthen community connections by partnering with local schools, universities and business groups. We host regular events including Thursday Thursdays, kids clinics, kids golf clinics, PGA Hope for the veterans and tournaments to increase public participation. Additionally, we collaborate with KISD golf coaches to promote junior golf and are actively planning the First Tee Initiative to introduce more young players to the game. Stone Tree has received positive reviews over the past year with an overall strong reputation across multiple platforms. Golf Advisor has the highest number of reviews with 4.07 star rating, while Google, Facebook and Yelp also reflect good customer experiences. To keep improving, we're actively encouraging guests to leave feedback with easy-to-use One more time. There we go. Stone Tree Golf Club is growing its online presence. Social media helps us connect with the community, promote events and bring in more golfers. Over the past year, our followers increased by 12.6% and our posts reach over 220,000 people. More engagement means more visibility and more players coming to the course. We stay active on social media by posting about events, contests, player achievements and seasonal promotions. These posts help engage the community, bring more people to the course and keep golfers informed about what's happening. One more. There we go. Our website is working. People are using it to book rounds, sign up for events and learn about the club. Last year, nearly 400,000 people visited and over 22,000 used it regularly, and it brought Trune's website is getting more visitors with nearly 6 million page views and 1.6 million users. More people are booking tee times and checking out their courses and membership deals, with traffic growing by 10% this year. In conclusion, our efforts are all about increasing engagement, boosting bookings and driving more revenue. This helps bring in more golfers and more revenue for our facility. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your support and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir, for the update. Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. My first question, Mr. Kegel, the land that was out there, we haven't shifted that over to the golf course yet, have we?
Yes, they have. We have already gone through the process of clearing out all that land, cutting away all the trees, so that process is ongoing. We are working with the Colleen Fire Department to see if we can collaborate and do some training with some of their firefighters to see if it's possible to do a controlled burn on all the trees and weeds that we took out.
What's your plans for that?
The plans are still in the preparing stage, unknown yet, probably additional rain space right now, but there could be options as we move future, further on in the future.
In your numbers, it showed from 24, we went from 200 plus and we went down to 60.
Correct. Correct. Last year, we were budgeted to make about 60K, but we had an outstanding year. We stayed similar in the budget going into 2025. We increased it some, but we didn't want to drastically jump. Also, with the RFP coming in October for the irrigation in the bunker, that's going to cut down on our revenue about 20 to 25% during that time.
And the last question is, I see you talked about the First Tee. When do you project that to?
That is, that is an ongoing problem and not problem, an opportunity. We cannot get a, or we're struggling to get our own chapter here because we have to come up with a large sum of money to do that. We are talking with the Austin First Tee and the Dallas-Fort Worth First Tee to see if we can make a sublocation to operate under their umbrella. And that is still in the process.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Your bet, sir.
Any more questions from the council? Councilman Solomon.
With the, I want to say it's a big turnaround for the golf.
Thank you, sir.
And we thank you for what you're doing over there and just making a complete change over there. I've been there quite a few times. In reference to the kids, you said you have a lot of programs for the kids. Do you see an increase with the kids from a year ago, two years ago?
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't here. I mean, I was here last summer, but I wasn't here prior. So I look forward there to be an increase this year as we go into summer because we're trying to get more active into the schools with the coaches and things of that nature, trying to get the word out more and get them planning for attending some of the golf programs instead of all of them going to soccer. We've got to get active in school and hit them early.
Great. And another question I have, in terms of the funding, I just want to make it clear that the golf course is carrying its own in terms of fundings. Mr. Kegel?
Yes, sir, that's true. Yeah, the data that we showed was before Trune took over, and then you can see the transition when they did, to reducing the deficit to turn it into net revenue.
And I think that's great. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Cigar.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the update. I was going to ask about the budget, but he asked that last question. But a couple of years ago, the council, you know, we raised fees and we charged people that did not live in the city, we charged them more. And it was said that it was going to affect our membership, that we were going to lose people. Have you guys been keeping track of that? Because I see that it seems like it's been doing okay. So I was just, is that maybe a reason why we're seeing the numbers go down or?
The numbers as far as the budget or?
From last year.
No, sir. That's, that is, as we said, we didn't budget a full 200K like we made the prior year. We stuck with what we had budgeted previously, which was about 60,000 in revenue, and we hope to have another good year going this forward, this year. As far as the memberships, back when they first raised that amount, I think there was a few of the members who fussed about it in the beginning, but I believe, if I were guessing, and I am right now, because I don't have the data, that all of those have come back.
Yeah. No, I'd be interested to see what our membership looked like. And the other thing is, you know, I've been on this council long enough and I remember that our losses were close to 400,000. So it's a huge, huge turnaround, something I've said the last few years, so it's a good relief. But I'm just curious that, you know, are we still looking to grow that? You know, it's good that we're making 60,000, last year 200,000, but how far can we push that? And if we've lost, and that's why I asked about memberships, you know, if we've lost some memberships, I know we raised fees, but lost some, and if that's the case and we can bring some of those memberships up, maybe we might see that revenue go up, so.
That's true, sir. And I think, I mean, we've, you know, we're, we'll probably go up again this October, and some people may raise a fuss about it, but they will, if they are real golfers, they will always come back to us.
Yeah. Well, if that's something you can do next time, you know, just have those numbers of the members. I'd be curious to see, you know, what our membership count over the years has been, especially when we did that change.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton.
Thank you. And so Councilmember Solomon touched on, a lot of my questions were around the young people, the children. And so I know you said about getting into the schools, but is it also possible to reach out to like the YMCA's, the Boys and Girls Clubs, other organizations as well? I just love the idea of the diversity in sports, just to give the kids, you know, another alternative. Is there, when it comes to those types of promotions, how else could you go about generating that interest and excitement for the young kids to be able to, or parents even, to want to have their children try something different?
Very good question. You know, we know that schools and the golf coaches in the schools help promote with kids in schools. With the boys' club, you know, they may just put a flyer out and nobody helps promote it. So that's where we're going to have to go in and do some instruction in-house for them to see, to try to gain some interest and, you know, get that, get the word out that way.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. If you could just speak briefly on the improvements that are coming to the clubhouse.
We're going to be, the clubhouse, as most of you know, or all of you know, has been there for a long time. It was an old house. There was very little done when they moved in, except for maybe the pro shop area as well as fixing, to fix that up to be operational. In this coming spring, we're going to be adding new siding, replacing the siding on the clubhouse. We're going to be painting inside and out. We're going to be replacing all the windows with energy efficient windows. We are going to continue to work on the outside plants, gardens, the first impression look to make it look very appealing to our customers.
Very good, thank you.
Any other council members who would like to speak?
Well, sir, thank you for all you do to bring that golf course up from where it was and where it is now. That is a part of our comprehensive plan, community engagement. That's an outlet for family members and also friends to come out, socialize and just get exercise for want and enjoy the outdoors. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much.
Madam Secretary.
DS 25004, Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce Update and Funding Request.
Thank you. Mr. Russell. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council members, city manager, attorney and secretary. Definitely appreciate the opportunity to be before you again. This presentation request shows where our values and our worth are directly aligned with the city comp plan. Our teachings, our education, our mentoring and influence is within the economic growth. The purpose of our plan, of course, is to guide growth, development and investment here in the city of Colleen. Our community-driven nature of IBCC has resulted in extensive engagement with residents, micro enterprise businesses and future stakeholders. This presentation will focus on fiscal sustainability and stewardship, which aims to address the city's resource gaps and improve the entrepreneur financial fiscal health. Since our last meeting, IBCC has restructured its board of directors and we have actually brought in a certified economic development board member. And as you can see on the title, it says a shared vision for Colleen. Y'all need to put new batteries in here or something? All right, our mission here is to cultivate an innovative and equitable ecosystem. And right here is a little social proof for the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce, Google reviews and some of the other platform and places that we have been seen here in Does it say next slide? Yes. All right, so just a little background. Most people think that we just started this last year, which we've actually been on this since 2023. We submitted a formal request through KEDC and partnership and funding, where we had a meeting with the president of KDC, Mr. Scott Connell, and he had said he has actually partnered and funded other chambers in his previous location, which was, I believe, in Grand Prairie or somewhere, somewhere up there in the Dallas area. And he said he has done so before. And what his instructions to me was to create a funding memo, submit that funding memo where he'll add it to the agenda for KEDC, and we did so. And what we did, once we went inside that area, went inside the KEDC when we were actually on the agenda item, which I believe city council member, I think you guys were in DC at the time, Mr. Kegel was in, was there at the time, and Mr. Connell, I think that's his name, gentleman that owned car dealerships, he said, I think you're in the wrong place. I think you should be receiving your money from the city of Colleen. And he asked Mr. Kegel, is this, you know, there's still time to do it? Mr. Kegel said, we've already done our budget. So what we did from that instruction is to create an agenda and a presentation to prepare, and that is where the April of 2024, we requested to be added to the city agenda for program funding and support, and that was in April. We didn't actually get on the agenda until July, for whatever reason. Definitely reached out to a couple of members on the DIAS and definitely appreciate the Assistant City Manager for helping out with that. After that conversation, we were placed on the very next agenda, and that was in July of 2024. And that's when it was motioned in second to be placed on six months, and that's where we are and how we got to this point. All right, so of course, the IBCC fosters a resilient economy that generates revenue. You know, what's the reason of calling yourself a chamber of commerce if you don't create commerce? So we're very focused on that, and we also have offset the city's infrastructure and service liabilities by ensuring that we put people in position to be an asset and not a liability. And with IBCC's business education programs, a grand opening in our networking event, we definitely create a vibrant ecosystem here in this area. And as you can see, the economic impact, which I briefed the last time, as well as you see, we have over 300 members in less than five years. And on this slide, what is partnership for Colleen's economic advancement looks like? So the economic contribution is directly linked to the tangible economic benefits of the city. We have demonstrated a capability to move capital by generating over 750,000 deposits and transfers, demonstrating commitment to local business and citizen, and the city's economic well-being. The vibrant neighborhoods and community engagement, we cultivate a thriving innovative ecosystem. We create collaborative communities where innovators and community partners continue to connect and share ideas and drive innovation in key sectors. and share ideas and drive innovation in key sectors. We are establishing Colleen as a center of creativity and innovation by attracting talent as well as investment, and fostering a culture of entrepreneurs which directly support the growth and the vision for a thriving and resilient community. And in doing so, with the last event that we had, which was AI and Innovation, we actually partnered with Meta. We brought in Google, and we also brought in Canva here into this space and various other tech companies. One came from Atlanta, one came, and one from Atlanta, one from Dallas, one from Arlington. We also brought one up from Austin as well. And in doing so, with this grassroots approach, we have created a shared space for, shared space with programs and encourage active community interactions. And with the support of local microenterpris businesses and entrepreneurs, previously like we had briefed, this city is comprised of at least 75% microenterpris businesses, especially when you look at the true definition of a small business and a true definition of a microenterpris business. With supporting local microenterpris, IBCC supports those entrepreneurs and essential to the economic vitality. We have completed five AI cohorts, which totaling of 75 individuals, which is a good mixture of business owners as well as just regular non-business owners as well. And as we champion innovation, the Com Plan stressed a need for Colleen to embrace innovation, to build a more prosperous future. And IBCC, with its focus on technology and innovation, business practices, is well positioned to partner. As you can see, we do four citywide events, not just one. This is more than flavors, but this is more about adding value to a city. With these four events, like last year, during November, it was briefed that 62 businesses were opened up downtown. What was not told or expressed, that IBCC had a direct or indirect influence in bringing 12 businesses. So that actually put 19.6% of those 62 businesses came down, came through IBCC. With the annual grand openings that we've had last year of 25 plus, and what we're working on, working on right now, of course, with the closure of the Business Resource Center, we're looking to establish a BSH Services, which is Business Service Hub, because we need a hub in this area, and we're going to work on bringing that and developing that in this area. I did bring SBA down, sat, SBA came down to the office. Most of the times when people talk about SBA, they really typically just go to one bank. So our meaning with SBA is to have them to have much more of a intimate presence here in this area for the businesses and not just people trying to buy homes. We're also bringing a CDFI to the city. For most of you that do know or don't know, there is no CDFI here in this area. The closest CDFI is coming out of Austin, which is People Fund, Left Fund, or you go north, you got Texas Mezzanine. So we brought a CDFI up, which is BCL, which we've had a longstanding relationship in the past. So looking to bring them in the area, when you're talking about access to capital, you have to look at what's traditional, what's non-traditional. So we have actively engaged in bringing this up, in bringing them up in this area. So we've carved out office space in our building for them to have a presence here as well. So how does this benefit the city and its citizens? So I'll cut that question. So how does it benefit the city and its citizens? The Colleen's Comprehensive Plan emphasizes fiscal responsibility, community culture, and thriving local business ecosystem. With economic stewardship and business ecosystem, IBCC has added, was added to the city of Colleen's Economic Development Policy under Section 3-10, where it listed as an ecosystem support organization. Of course, when we came at the time to ask was to be added to the policy, and the other request was to be added to KEDC, because we cannot talk about a, a equal and economic prosperity when there is no diversity on that particular board itself. IBCC also offers business education to business owners and future entrepreneurs, as well as contracting opportunity to increase the contracting, the contracting opportunities. So what we've done, we found out in this area, this area from a contracting perspective in microenterpris and nonprofits, contracting only takes up about 1.3% in this marketplace. And what this does is really aligns with the city's Com Plan, which focuses on developing a self-sustaining local business ecosystem. Again, we were already added to the policy on the 3-10, listed as an ecosystem support organization. IBCC maximizes cultural business-to-business relationships while highlighting available federal and state and local resources as well. Here in this area, what we do here is connect to the Com Plan strategy, as well as coordinate resources to maximize the community's benefit. We also focus on small business contracting initiatives to where we begin to look what's already on the Open Gov or the CMBL. Look what's out there, and attach businesses that are able to do that particular work according to their NACE codes and things. And we put them in position and let them know these are contracting opportunities that you can participate in. The community engagement and revitalization, IBCC is involved in cultural and community-focused initiatives. Because while we promote diverse cultural activities and events through Culture on the Square and other citywide event focuses on synchronizing culture as well as entertainment, which aims to revitalize the, the community economically, this approach aligns with the City Com Plan emphasis on neighborhood-centric improvements to enhance quality of life, property values, and community well-being. So you ask, what does this do for the citizens? Well, we actually pool our resources and prevent and present opportunities for the citizens in this area. So as you can see, what we do here in this area is active. What we do here in this city is engaging, and what we do here in this city is innovative. And we have done this impact without funding. But what would it look like if we did actually receive a service agreement? You may ask, what are you getting? That's what we heard the last time, several times. Well, I don't know what I'm getting. So the ROI with this, we're looking to offer benefits to the city, which I know you won't get anywhere else in this city, by applying corporate membership to where the city of Colleen, as well as we will even add the KVB, which is the Colleen Visitors Bureau, and as members of IBCC, from a marketing perspective, we already have a, a media partner with KRGN. So mathematically, what does that mean from a marketing perspective? That's over 125 60-second radio mentions throughout the year for the city of Colleen and KVB, with event calendar updates and marketing as well. What are we getting? List the city of Colleen as title sponsor for our downtown events. What are we getting? Monthly town halls. We actually call them fellowships. Every last Friday of the month, minus November, December, because those are two holidays. Those 50 town halls would allow the city, as well as KVB, to disseminate information directly to its citizens. What are we getting? Priority access for our gala events, so the table, as well as four-page ad in our, our books. What are we getting? City services access to where we're able to, the job openings that the city may have, those can be added on our website. We can mention those on the radio, as well as we have the opportunity to add them to the calendar, as well as our social media as well. So the official ask is 250 annual. And here's the usage of the funds, 45% Program Services, 25 Admin Planning, 15% Marketing Services, another 15% Marketing Research and Discovery. And as you see right here, it says operating cost zero. What does all this mean? I get it. I'm glad you asked. So from the Program Services, that 45% will be allocated for support core programs and services offered by IBCC, which is like our Certification Assistant classes, I mean Certification Assistant. We have already partnered with TVC, the Texas Veteran Commission, to where we have the ability to assist and expedite, expedite the certification of veterans. We will send them the link. They will fill out the survey. They'll email us their DD 214 and their veteran, veterans letter. And then we'll submit that up into the server, so that process gets cut in half, just because of our partnership with TVC. And we also conduct how-to-do business workshops, which we have done for the city of, within the city of Colleen. We've done it with Texas A&amp;M. We also done it with KISD. And since those how-to-do business, we had one member get a bid, and that was for a demo. Another member, two members get bids on KISD. Again, if there were no how-to-do business series, then those individual businesses would not have been added as vendors in order for them to get those valuable resources as well. Because last time I checked, the last time the city has had a hub event was 2015. We've been doing that since 2020. And we're not going to stop doing it, because that's what a chamber is supposed to do, offer opportunity and resources in order for not just members, but for citizens to understand what is out there and not just what's at a mixer. And these programs and services will be designated to help and assist with those tools. And as we develop this going forward, IBCC would definitely be committed to fostering growth and prosperity for those microenterpris businesses. The admin and planning, the admin and planning will go into strategically, strategically allocated to ensure the enhancement and efficiency of IBCC. Building strong, building a stronger foundation, investing in administrative systems, processing and streamlined operations, enhance communication, and optimize organization effectiveness. Strategically plan and execute, which is develop and implement comprehensive strategic plans to guide IBCC's growth, to ensure alignment with the mission and maximize the impact within the city of Colleen. Financial management, to implement sound financial management practices to ensure responsible resource allocations, accurate tracking, and transparent reporting. Talent and infrastructure, securing and retaining talent, providing professional development opportunities, and investing in essential infrastructure to support the city's growth and the entrepreneur ecosystem. This includes engaging expert grant writers to secure additional funding and partnering with research organizations to leverage data and insight for strategic decision-making. And for the marketing and research, I mean, the marketing, resource development, which is targeted marketing and outreach, which develops the execution target market campaign to promote the program and services for the city of Colleen offers to businesses and entrepreneurs. This includes leveraging digital channels, social media, and community partnership to reach the target audience and position Colleen as a hub for business innovation and growth. Showcasing value and impact, represent the city of Colleen at trade shows and tech events and innovation summits to showcase the city's resources, support, and thriving business ecosystem to broader, to a broader audience, and attract talent, talented individuals to Colleen, to where if the KEDC actually go to a trade show, we will be able to be self-sufficient and to, and to align with them and go out there. Because to go out there to represent the city, and everyone at the table looks like everyone at the table, that's not what the citizens look like, nor does, nor does that, nor does that actually accurately depict what the city looks like as individuals. Resource development and partnerships, actively pursue partnership with collaboration with corporations, foundations, and government agencies to secure additional funding and resources to support the economic development of Colleen. And this includes developing compelling grants proposal and building strong relationships with potential funders. The market research and discovery, develop a needs assessment. To develop a needs assessment, we'll be conducting a comprehensive research to identify the specific needs and challenges for the businesses in Colleen. Focus on understanding the unique barriers of, of underrepresented entrepreneurs face. Trend analysis, analyzing market trends, data, industry data, and emerging technologies to identify opportunities for innovation and growth in Colleen's business landscape, competitive analysis, as well as impact measurement. The operating cost, it will cost me nothing to operate. I have not taken a salary within this organization since it started, and I will currently continue not to take a salary for the chamber as we build its success. Many of my counterparts make anywhere between 165 to 180 a year. I do it because it's hard work. We need to build this city up, and it's going to take everyone to actually do it, and not just one person and a couple of people. The long-term goal is to not depend on the city of Colleen and to grow with the city of Colleen, and to eventually remove ourselves from the city budget. Our goal in the next 12 months is to work to secure a grocery store for North Colleen and its citizens. As Colleen proudly boasts that it is a city without limits, let's not limit IBCC. That will be the end of my brief. And if you have any questions, submit your questions.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And I do have some questions for you. The Business Service Hub, Hub, with Texas Workforce, they had CTC and the Chamber. Have you reached out to CTC as a partnership to try to go under that same agreement that they had with Texas Workforce?
I sat with Texas Workforce first, because as of right now, we can speak transparently.
I would hope.
Okay. As of right now, there are, there are educational institutions that, all of them, all of them don't operate the same, for whatever reason. I had a couple of meetings with them, and there were some things that were said. But I, I sat, I sat already with, with Workforce.
Yes, sir.
Because some of them received their fundings for certain things.
Yes, sir. And my next question is grocery store that, right here. Out of the services that you're offering to the city, the marketing, the market research and the discovery and the marketing services. With your services, can they be breaking down on, on what we might need? Or is it just a whole package? We have to get all, one, two, three, four services that you're offering?
All of it, just like the other organizations. Because within that market, research and discovery, like when we first went out to Oklahoma, we took that out of our budget. Six of us went to Tulsa. And we had targeted locations to where we were going. And we knew that we weren't leaving without finding one. And the one that we found just so happened to be at that time. I did have a meeting with a grocery store this, what day did I have a meeting with you, Mr. Cagle?
Believe it was Monday.
Yeah, that, that day, because I had a meeting with him, and I had a meeting at 10 o'clock with, with another grocery store. So we do have relationships with them, so.
So as far as the grocery stores, this is going to be my last question, because you have, oh, I have one more. For the grocery stores, was there any prospects to come here?
A hundred percent. It's always been.
And my last question, you said you had a certified economic development person on your staff now?
A hundred percent.
And his or her responsibility? Does, will that operate just like a KEDC? I guess I'm getting to that point.
His influence and expertise. We are not a KDC. We're not an economic development corporation, at least not yet. But he will operate from that field of expertise.
From that perspective, okay. All right. So with that, Councilmember Segarra, thank you, Mr. Russell.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. I appreciate all that the Innovative Black Chamber of Commerce does. I know you guys do a lot for the city, especially in our downtown area, helping all those businesses. And last time, I think we had a conversation, because I think that, you know, I'm in favor of doing something like that. But as I mentioned before, it should be part of EDC, you know. The city funds, we fund the EDC. And, you know, I don't, you know, they hire, they say, we don't, they hire the chamber, I guess. We don't give money directly to the chamber. And I think I, I made mention of having you part of that. I think we did something, you remember what we did? Were you part of that EDC?
Was I a part of the EDC?
Yeah, did we, did we put you on EDC or not?
That never happened, sir.
I thought we did.
In order for him to get on KEDC and we had this conversation, they set their own bylaws. Now, one of the council members between Mayor Procton Gonzalez or Councilmember Carr, if this council agreed to give up one of the seats, and that would be the only way moving forward, because they set their own.
Yeah, I think that maybe that's where it was, because we had made, I think, a motion and voted that you were on there as maybe a non-voting member, is that correct?
And it was an ex officio. Like, anyone can attend a meeting, but when they have their closed-door meeting, I don't know if an ex officio can go behind closed doors. And that's something that, if that's some, the direction you want to go, then that's something the council can only make a motion of direction on it tonight. If that's the way you want to go.
Well, even if it's where.
After you talk to them, or we can make that motion of direction. As a representative for the city of Colleen, we would like to have an ex officio to serve on KEDC.
Yeah, I thought we had done that, that's why I was saying. But even if it's where we increased, because I know one time we used to give more money to the EDC Economic Development, we went through some budget challenges and we pretty much cut that in half. So when we go through this budget, you know, if we're able to, you know, increase that EDC money, you know, so that they would get a little bit of that. Because I know, I think that's where it needs to come from, as I mentioned before, is through the EDC. And let you guys, you know, get some of that, if we're able to increase that. I don't know exactly how much it would be, you know, to the city manager and all that, I guess, be all of us.
I thought they were already increased. They went from seven, now they're at eight and they add another twenty.
I know they asked for more money last year, but what I'm saying is, let's, let, you know, if we get some money from, because we got to get that money from somewhere, you know, so we're not just going to pull it out. And I always think it's got to come from EDC. And so I think that, you know, even if I have to, we have to do somewhere, say, okay, this amount coming from EDC is designated just for the Innovative Black Chamber, you know. And so, so that's something that, when we go into the budget and stuff, see if that, we're able to do that, something like that. Because I don't know, I don't know what the ask for this year for EDC is going to be.
What I was trying to understand, that's why I stated before, are you making a motion of direction for Mr. Russell to set on the KEDC as an ex officio? And also, are you making a motion of direction and the council will determine tonight on what amount you want to come out of, through KEDC? That's what we're trying, we're trying.
Number one, is I said, the money should come from the EDC funding that we do. Number one. And number two is, we don't know what it's going to be for this year. What I'm saying is if the council, if the city manager, if we're able to increase that, you know, if you say, I want two hundred, and we add that, no matter what amount is, I think it should be part of the EDC. We'll say, okay, here's a hundred thousand, we're going to increase the EDC budget by whatever it is, by a hundred thousand, but that amount is going to be designated for the Innovation Black Chamber, if that's it. But my point being that I think personally, whatever it is, should be coming from our EDC budget.
Okay, so let me get some clarification. Your time is up, but still I have a question. And maybe I'm saying it wrong. So am I understanding, please, I got a little cold going. Am I understanding you that you don't have a problem with, and correct me, because you know, I used that before and it was taken out of context, that whatever amount they want or whatever the amount the council agreed to, you wanted to come out of what KEDC is already getting? Or you want us to add that to KEDC and put a stipulation?
No, no, it should be added. It should be added. We don't want to cut, you know, the point is not to cut KDC's budget, but if we come up with an amount, then it should be part of EDC. And then, you know, designate that part to the Innovative Black Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. And back to the ex officio, that's a motion or direction too? Will be coming from you, I'm assuming?
Well, I thought I had made that before. I could have sworn you were an ex officio, non-voting member.
So was it, was it, did we, did that pass?
It did.
So it's, well, you could, you could attend meetings, so, no, he didn't get the word evidently.
He was right here.
Mr. Russell, are you looking at me as if I know?
Mr. Russell knows. We, we had communicated about it. But.
Through the minutes?
Was it, I don't know. What is the, from that motion and direction to me? It was nothing to me, you are an ex officio to KDC, blah, blah, blah. Because it's an open meeting, right? Whether I'm ex officio or not, it's just once they go in a closed session, I got to leave. So where's the, where's the power in that?
Madam City Attorney, ex officio, if we go into closed meeting, and I know you can't speak for the chamber, they cannot go into closed meetings? I don't know the legality of that, sir.
I, I would have to discuss that with KDC, I can't answer for KDC.
Mr. Cagle?
He stays.
I'm, I'm ex officio, yes. They would need to change their bylaws, it's not that big of a deal, but they wouldn't, it wouldn't just be the council putting them on. KEDC and council together need to do that, but that should be fairly simple to do. But yes, ex officio members attend executive session. You just don't vote.
Okay, so that will have to come from KDC agreeing that, on that.
I think, I think if a council member on the KEDC board brought it up and wanted to put the bylaws on.
I can bring it up. I can take care of that.
And can I say something?
Yes, sir.
And, and the point of that, because, you know, Mr. Russell, very smart, you know, he does a lot. We want, we don't want to create that separation, you know, we want you to be part of what's going on. You know, you've said a few things, you know, they, we don't want they, them, them. You need to come, and if, that way you're at the board, you know, it's better to be, as they say, on the table, that, at the table than on the table. You want to be at the table knowing what's going on with the city, because you can contribute quite a bit, even as an ex officiado and vice versa. And I think that there can be a lot of good in time, you know, I think that, you know, we can figure out a way to create a, a, a board seat for them, if we talk to KEDC. But, you know, I think that getting them on the, at the table there, well, what's going on, that's very important.
Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe we did do that and I would like to see what we have already done as a council. I believe it was last year.
Yes, sir. We all agree, it's just, I have to take it back to KEDC when we have our meeting and put it on the agenda.
I see.
So that he can, from what I understand, ten-hour closed-door meetings. So that's just a matter of voting on it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And good evening. I'm looking at a different approach to this. First and foremost, I'll say I'm not sure I could support any funding at this time, understanding what the budget is for the city. And I know we're talking about KDC would have to make a consideration there. But what I will speak in favor of is considering putting the president of IBCC, whoever that may be, on the KEDC board going forward. Perhaps at the next term, when it does exist. And here are just the qualifiers. Every time this organization has come to present to the council, we've seen progress. We've seen events and we've seen, we've seen developments. And they're an arm of economic development for our city. We're trying to find a way to get them at the table through having an own agenda, et cetera, when we can just place somebody on the board and solve this, where we're actually at the table, we're actually at the table to contribute to these conversations and the, the direction of, of KDC. I'm looking ten years out, right? What does the board look like? What does the city look like? How are we working together to, to really thrive regarding economic development? So my proposal to the council would be to consider, at this point, giving up one of our three seats to really allow this organization to sit at the table, if the council so desired. So that's just my position. I sat on this board. I understand the benefit of being on the board and being able to contribute to those conversations. And I think it would be beneficial if IBCC at some point, sooner than later, is on this board. And that's just my position. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I do remember we did vote about him being on, being ex, well, IBCC being an ex officio seat. And we also voted to recognize IBCC as an economic, not an economic development corporation, but it's, I forgot the title that's in the Texas code. And then when I look at the KDC bylaws, they're approved by us and we approve the board. So, I mean, I don't, I don't agree with dropping, I think because KDC works technically for the council in the city, I think we should remain three. But I agree with also, both Councilmember Boyd and Councilmember Segarra, that we look at this how it fits in our current budget. To just, because right now we don't have a budget yet and I know staff is just starting to put it together. And I know come June, we'll be getting the partner request sometime in that timeframe. I think that this should be considered as part of that. But like, I do, I don't think we should keep kicking it down the road on bringing this chamber. And even after that, any other chamber that comes after, we have a process for how we include them in our economic development process. Thanks.
Mayor Procton.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. So first, I just want to say thank you for everything that Innovation has done for the city of Colleen as a whole, especially with the initiatives, because you guys took the reins when it was time for the search for grocery and not just talking about it, you really walked that walk and then actually took the trip and, and did the legwork. So just thank you for that. But I do have a question, and maybe it's Mr. Cagle, I'm not, I'm not really sure. The difference between, you know, we know what a chamber, you know, the functions of a chamber as compared to an economic development corporation, right? So I think that it would be important, and I'm gonna, I think it would be important to have a seat at the table to expand the services for the city and to work together to drive and attract new businesses to our town. It was mentioned that there was some concern previously about duplication of services. So before I go to Cagle, how would that work, sir? Just so people can have peace of mind, that ideally we'd be working together, as we have in the past, with the rest of the city to drive business and development to the city.
Between the two chambers or between?
As a chamber in conjunction with Economic Development Corporation.
I mean, we don't approach it the same way. We don't share the same relationships. We don't share the same resources. KDC wouldn't have put someone on a plane to go to Oklahoma. The last time we went to Oklahoma and flew there to go sit in Oasis was because of IBCC. That's how everyone got on that private plane and flew out to Tulsa and to sit with, with Oasis inside of Oklahoma. So there should be no, there is a difference. I mean, we wear boots on the ground. Like, we're the ones that go out, that's how we have the second grocery store. We're the ones that do that. So there, there's a big difference between the two. But we educate. Again, there hasn't been a hub, anything in a city since 2015 and we took that on. There are no business classes outside of what IBCC does from another economic organization. There are no sitting with the city finance department talking about, are there any hub goals? Are there any? Like, we do that because it's needed and it's necessary. We are a true advocate for smaller businesses and the citizens in this community, in the city. So there's no duplication of services at all. We just burn the candle from the other end.
Thank you.
Any more questions? This is, this is my perspective. I agree with everything the council said to, to some point. As I stated during our priority meeting, that the grocery store on the north side of town is, is big for me. And we want to put Mr. Russell along with Hispanic chamber, Asian chamber, whatever chamber we have on, on KEDC board. First of all, those are their bylaws. They don't, we, we're paying them for a service. They don't work for us. We're paying them for a service, just like they provide a service for anyone else. And what he's asking for, that's why I asked you that question, Mr. Russell. Was there certain things on here that, instead of the whole package, could we, could you offer us a service, marketing service, to go out and get a, a grocery store to come to the table with us? And I noticed that that was like thirty-seven thousand dollars. But if it's the whole package, what I'm understanding for the council, based on our current budget, but during our priority meeting, we were like negative two million, that was just proposed budget. And those are some more important things to the council. Four percent COLA for our staff, staff and our fire department station four, and also our maintenance and operation. Those are things we must have. And I don't even know what else is going to come along with that. So how do we, and I'm hearing this out my, my ear, that you provided out the sixty-two businesses downtown, you provided nineteen percent of that. And everyone's saying that you're doing an excellent job and we want to help you, but you looking at the financial perspective of it. If I'm providing a service while not getting paid for my worth. And I'm only focused on the grocery store and everything, everybody said is, is right. And somebody said kicking it down the road. And we put stuff in the atmosphere like, hey, this is something that we really, really need to take into consideration, knowing the budget is coming up as we get closer to it. Knowing that we don't have two hundred thousand dollars to just give Mr. Russell. So what do we do? We want him to provide a service, so where's the compensation? Knowing that two hundred thousand dollars, from what I'm hearing, that's not there. So is it there? What is Councilmember Segarra proposing to add on for it to come out of KEDC? Some count, he got to provide a service, it always go back. He has to provide us a service and we pay for that service. So where are we at with that? Any motions or directions before I move forward? Mayor Procton.
That would also be my question, is at this, at this rate, just being, I've been sounding the alarm, I keep saying this over and over again, the state of our, the way our, the country is going, we get a lot of things, a lot of questions that are in limbo. I think that it's really going to be all hands on deck as it relates to our communities and figuring out how to keep them growing and find opportunities. And the overlapping of service question was also because, obviously, if we have more boots on the ground or we have more hands that we can utilize to make sure that we're providing the top level of business research development, attracting new businesses here, on top of educating our existing businesses and doing the functions that your chamber is actively, actively doing. My question though, for whomever, I don't know if this is, is a motion of direction to bring back information, because I am curious on the process of what, to your point, what this looks like. So is it to be able to put these two together, to put them on there, to expand the reach? What does that look like? What is that process? And then how do we prevent the overlapping of services? Where, to your point, we're maximizing this chamber's efficiency as it relates to their services that they provide in conjunction with our EDC and our other chambers. services that they provide in conjunction with our EDC and our other chambers. What does that look like? What does that process look like? Do we have models that are already in existence? I don't have an answer to that right now, but I am curious to know.
I actually sent that contract.
It's right there.
So the model was at your, to your front.
So the determining factor is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Reynolds, I mean, Mr. Russell, if I'm wrong, he's providing the same services as KEDC from what I'm hearing.
As a chamber?
As a chamber. You're providing the same service. No, 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 not the way you're looking at me, not that. He's providing the same services when we act, when he went out and got a grocery store, when he brought 19% of the 62 business. He's bringing in economic development growth. That is what I understood you to say. And what you're saying, you don't want, Mayor Protem, you don't want two services overlap. If we already paying for a service, we don't need that service.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
That is not what I'm saying. I'm a process person. So my thing is, I believe that we need all hands on deck, and we do need to expand our reach. So the services that IBCC currently offers, to his point, there, there's not a lot of that happening right now. They are leading the way when it comes to advancing our small businesses and providing an educational resource. So there is a huge value add, expanding our reach. My question is in detail, quickly, I mean, in trying to figure out, how can we put this together? What does that look like? Are we, is it just a matter of us looking at bylaws and amending bylaws? Is it that simple? Or is it, do we have to have a deeper process in place to be able to expand our EDC's reach? Where does that come from? What does that process look like? And do we need a motion of direction to research it?
So do we need, we want more economic development growth? And the process is to see, how can we bring IBCC?
That's his question, is getting a seat at the table. So what does that process look like? And how do we make that happen? Or at least explore the option? Do we need a motion of direction? Can somebody help? I mean, do we need a motion of direction for that?
We'll get back to that when we get to Councilon Cop. Councilon Cop.
Hi, Mr. Russell. Thank you for your presentation. Very nice, very thorough. It's important that each time we go into an Economic Development Corporation meeting, we have different objectives on the table. We're now going to take, we're looking at your objectives plus their objectives. So what we're going to have to do, I have no answer for you, but we can sit down with you and economic development, and together we can look at that. I think we should sit down and maybe plan a get-together, is what they would call it, get-together, and look at your objectives, look at their objectives, and let's see what we can do. Yes, we are working with a deficit right now, and as far as money is concerned, I do see that this is a great factor for you to sit on that board and to hear all of the great minds together, and we all come together and come up with a conclusion. But right now, there's no answer. You got two different sets of groups, and we're trying to figure it out, so we can figure it out together.
Mr. Russell, I do would like, and I hope the council can agree, I would like to come to the table to discuss a service from you to bring in a grocery store. And I don't know if you provide just, I don't know how much it would cost, and I know it's a full package, but that's something that I would like to discuss with IBCC, especially if you already met with Mr. Kegel on Monday. I don't know your conversation, what you had, and you said it is feasible to bring a grocery store here. Did I understand that, Mr. Russell?
Is it feasible to bring one here? It's always feasible to bring a grocery store here.
Okay.
That's fine.
So Council, Mayor Protem, I mean, Councilmember Segarra, then Mayor Protem.
All right. I think the value that the innovative Black Chamber of Commerce brings to this city, you guys are still located in downtown, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, is internal. You know, they've done a lot of great job with our downtown, and I think that's where the value is. And I've always said this even before, and I think economic development, for what you guys, if you had to say, you know, what is the big thing that you guys brought, is that economic development locally. You know, you guys work with the businesses downtown. The current economic development that we have, you know, they work outside, international. And I see that there is a value there. I mean, you guys, you know, the mayor mentioned service. I think that's your service, whether it's a grocery, anything, you know. But I think that, you know, in the past, I've kind of made mention, you know, we should find somebody that can just work on the internal, you know, working with the businesses, bringing more and stuff like that. That would be a service. But it's also part of EDC. I truly believe that it has to come out of EDC. And we would have to fund more for that, but say, okay, your service as a Black Chamber of Commerce here locally is to help our local businesses, you know, the ones that are here. Because I see a lot, that's where your value is right there, and that's what you work at. I don't know what that looked like, you know. I don't know where the city manager would pull money, but I don't think it'd be $250,000. I think, you know, less than that, but at least it's a start, you know. And so if we can figure out, and, you know, the ask would be the city manager, where are you going to pull us some money, you know, whether it's $50,000 or, but get that process, and there's your service, you know. We want our downtown improved, and you guys are doing a great job. Grocery store has nothing to do with traveling over there. I know, and a lot of people know why we don't have a grocery store. HEB was losing $40,000 a month, and I keep repeating that. We just don't have enough people downtown, and they had a building paid off, and they're losing $40,000 a month, and they're a billion-dollar company. No matter who we bring in, when the economic development provides that resource, that's where they hesitate. You know, if we as a city took on that and built our own grocery store, we'd have to go to the taxpayers to make up the shortage of funds that that grocery store would bring in, you know, they're losing. You know, you saw a golf course, you know, where you're losing $40,000, $400,000 at one time. So a grocery store loses a lot money, more money than that, and that's always been the problem. It's not that we don't have an interest. It's when they look at those numbers, that's the big challenge that we have to provide. We have to be honest with them. But I think that there's something there for you guys to do, because, you know, doing what you do every day, which is working with our local businesses, our downtown, there's a lot of businesses locally that don't get that opportunity, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Segarra. And one of the things I had spoken to you about, Mr. Russell, was last year, and you may have forgotten, one of the needs that we do have for services is to completely fill up all of the buildings downtown, which would be small businesses. And that was a service that if you could provide to the city that, hey, I can fill, we got 12 buildings empty, I can go out and assist with that and then take the 12, I'm just saying hypothetically, if it's 12 businesses, I don't know. But then also work in hand with the chamber, Colleen Chamber, to make sure the rest of our small businesses are taken care of. There are many ways, I agree with you, Councilmember Segarra, that their expertise is small businesses, but my still focus, I know you say the opposite of me, and that's okay, is grocery store from north side. Yes, sir.
So what does the Colleen Chamber do? Because I'm hearing everything y'all expect for IBCC to do. What does the Colleen Chamber do?
I'm looking at it from a perspective that, and council can correct me if I'm wrong, the services that you present to us tonight, and I could be off, and they can correct me, is something that, as Mayor Protem said, we need to go back and research to ensure that it's not a duplication, to ensure how this service can come into play, process. So with that being said, I'm hearing a lot of talking, but no motion or direction.
I got it.
Yes, ma'am.
And that was my, I planned to make a motion of direction because I clearly...
We have one more person.
Oh, yes, ma'am, then, thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand that there's an ask financially today, and I already stated my position on it, based on the budget. But I think little wins are important as well, and I would like to see IBCC have a seat at the table to at least resolve one thing. Now, I do also understand that the council is able to structure, restructure the KEDC board. That is our prerogative. And I know we have three members currently sitting on that board. We also have the opportunity to simply add another seat to that board. And I just want to make sure I'm correct, so I'm going to ask the city attorney if that in fact is true.
I did pull up the KEDC bylaws that I had back July 2024. I probably need to make sure I have the most updated one, but in that, in those bylaws, it says that the governing body, number of directors may be increased or decreased by the governing body, but amendment of the bylaws, it also states amendment of the bylaws requires to be approved by the Board of Directors. So we just need, and I was able to find that there was a motion of direction back in July of last year to include IBCC on the Board of Directors. So I just need to follow up with staff on what has happened.
So my understanding is that we've already made a motion to place IBCC on the Board of Directors. We just haven't went through the process of making that happen just yet.
As ex officio, let me clarify that, yes. I'm sorry, as we've discussed previously, as ex officio.
Understood. And prior to that, you stated that the council could add an additional seat to KEDC to... My understanding from what you said is that we can add another seat to KEDC as a council, but then the KEDC board would also have to approve that?
The way the bylaws are written, there's a section that says that the number of directors can be increased by the governing body. And then it also says that amendment of the bylaws, because there's additional information about how those seats are, it says that there, three of them are from the City of Colleen, mayor and city council, three from the Greater Chamber of Commerce, and three from the Colleen Industrial Foundation. And later, there's, the section says amendment of the bylaws, which would include those sections, requires approval of the Board of Directors. So I believe that that would be a two-step process, but I just want to confirm what's been done already.
Sure, and that governing body being the city council and the Board of Directors being KEDC.
I'm sorry?
That would be the governing body being the city council and the Board of Directors is KEDC.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I'm going to make a motion of direction, looking into the future. My motion of direction is to, for the city council to add an additional seat to the KEDC Board of Directors for the president of the IBCC going forward.
I second that motion.
We have a motion of direction that the council add another seat for the Innovation Black Chamber on KEDC. All, any questions? All in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Mayor Protem, you had a motion of direction?
That was it.
Oh, that was it?
That was it, thank you.
Okay, all right then. Any more questions? All right, sir, thank you.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
Just one real quick thing.
Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Adams.
I don't know if we need to do this, but do we need to do a motion of direction to have staff, include them in the process like we do with our other partners, and determine whether we can provide, and if we can, how much? Is a motion of direction needed for that? Because I'm listening to the...
Are you saying that in the budget process, when everybody, you'll come back to us, Mr. Russell, for the budget process with all the other nonprofits, they all come together?
Right.
And that's when you will have, the council will make that decision?
That we need to do a motion of direction?
Because you do a motion of direction now, and you're going to have to put a price on it.
Got it. I just wanted to make sure that, when you had brought up with the intent of the presentation...
I do, I do, I do, I do, I'm being honest. I do think the compensation, even though for a grocery store, that service to do the research, I am still on that. But his package, from what he stated, is all together, and I know we don't have that amount of money. So he has to come back and present.
Okay, so he can do that without a motion of direction?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
Yes, Councilman.
Well, and I was going to say on that line, because that's what I want Mr. Russell to do when he's part of the KEDC, when they come forth, you got to keep this in mind, when you come forth and ask for a budget request, you want to make sure that within that you include the amount that you want for IBC. And that's the whole point, you know, whatever that's going to be, we don't know. But you got to figure out a amount there and all that. And when they come for a budget, they're going to let us know, this is what we request, and we want an additional amount for you guys.
That's what I gave him in '23.
Yeah, so that's how we want it to work. So it's all part of EDC.
Discuss agenda items three to nine for March 4th, 2025, regular session. No final actions until regular session. Madam Secretary.
Amen 25006, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of February 18th, 2025. Moving on, RS 25029, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing procurement of a Flock Safety Camera System from Flock Group Incorporated in the amount of $488,250, utilizing grant city and state forfeiture, forfeiture funds.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Chief Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. I'm here this afternoon to present this presentation about a Flock Safety license plate reader. This will also enhance our effectiveness at our real-time crime center. In November 2024, the Colleen Police Department submitted an application for Senate Bill 244, Catalytic Converter Grant through the Texas Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority. As part of the grant application, KPD proposed the integration of Flock cameras to enhance its proactive efforts in combating violent crime and motor vehicle theft. In accordance with the grant requirements, the city council approved the acceptance of the anticipated award on January 7th, 2025. This grant plays a vital role in the department's strategic initiative to tackle vehicle and catalytic converter theft, as well as violent crime, by leveraging advanced technology and real-time data analysts. Flock Safety is a company specializing in automated license plate recognition, which we call ALPR or LPR, you might see here both terms, cameras and analytics designed to enhance public safety for law enforcement agencies, neighborhoods, and businesses. The system captures high-resolution images of vehicles, including license plates, make, model, and color, and integrates with law enforcement databases to assist in identifying stolen vehicles, wanted suspects, and other vehicles of interest. The information captured by LPR cameras can help determine whether a vehicle was at the crime scene. Law enforcement agencies can share the information with other agencies. What Flock is not, Flock Safety is designed to eliminate human bias in crime solving. Its license plate recognition, cameras, and machine learning technology identify vehicle characteristics, types, and license plates, cross-referencing them with state and federal records to enhance accuracy and reduce errors. Flock Safety does not collect personal data such as names, phone numbers, or addresses, nor does it track specific locations of individuals. The system lacks any functionality to mark or annotate the locations of passersbyers. Records will be retained, will be retained for 30 days by KPD before permanently deleted. Flock Safety, and I say this again, Flock Safety does not override the Fourth Amendment. Officers will continue to operate within constitutional guidelines. The financial impact, Flock Safety has been designated as a sole source vendor by the City of Colleen and numerous governmental agencies across the United States. Additionally, grant funding will be allocated to law enforcement, will be allocated to the Law Enforcement Grant Fund as part of the mid-year budget amendment, which will be presented to the city council on April 15th, 2025. The Colleen Police Department will utilize existing funds available under the general funds and our state seizure accounts. The total cost of the two-year contract is as follows. In fiscal year '25, we will spend $267,250. Fiscal year '26, we will spend $221,000, for the total amount of $488,250. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager or the designate to enter into a professional service agreement with Flock Safety for automated license plate technology in the amount of $488,250. Additionally, the city manager or the designate is to... Additionally, the city manager or the designee is expressly authorized to approve and execute any necessary change orders within the limits established by the state and local law. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And here tonight with me is the Flock Safety representative to answer any technical questions you may have. And that's Mr. Cutler.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. First question I have about money, what's the long-term cost of maintaining this? And how will those costs be funded? Will we continue to grant, or will it eventually come into our general fund or whatever other fund that we have?
Yes, sir. The Texas Crime Prevention or Motor Vehicle, Texas Crime Prevention Authority has been executing this grant since 1989. And we're in the process, we had a meeting this morning, we're in the process of applying for the 2026 grant next year.
Okay. And I'm glad you brought up about the Fourth Amendment. What other, about any other privacy implications that are, using a camera system will, will have? And what measures will you, you and your command staff take to ensure privacy?
Yeah. Privacy is a big issue that we want to protect, everybody's privacy. Our policies and procedures currently, right now, any person that access, any police officer that access the Flock camera, we will have an audit trail. So we don't just randomly run license plates to, you know, check where you, where you live or anything like that. So that's a big issue, a big audit trail that we have. Other privacy things that we have done is that we don't rely just on the license plate reader to implicate someone committing a crime. We do additional checks. We have to corroborate that evidence that hit on that license plate and tie it into an actual crime. So it's not just the license plate reader doing the work for the police officer. You know, the police officer still has to confirm and corroborate that evidence in order to seek charges and obtain an arrest warrant.
And if you can't answer this, I understand for early sensitivity, but do you have already designated locations? Because I know there's been concerns...
Yes.
That it would be in local income areas only. So can you address that?
Yes, sir. There are several reasons why I'm reluctant to, to say where the cameras are. First of all, it preserves operational effectiveness. Flock cameras will be strategically placed around the city based on crime data, intelligence, and traffic patterns in order to maximize their, the impact in identifying the criminals or committed crimes. So by publicly disclosing their location, it defeats the effectiveness of those cameras. These cameras are used to solve crimes and deter crimes. So again, if we disclose where these cameras are, the criminals are going to avoid those areas. So it's going to, again, decrease our effectiveness, and it's not good practice. And best practices around the nation, and Mr. Cutler could attest to that, is that agencies do not disclose the location of these cameras for the reasons that I said.
Right. Thanks. I'm familiar with the system, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure those that are listening hear that from you. And if, if I may, I just had a question, quick question, City Attorney. There's no requirement to post notifications of surveillance in the public domain, is it?
Not in this context that I know of, no.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
If I could add something, these cameras are bias-free. All it does is look for numbers and colors and make and type of the vehicle. It doesn't search for persons by race, gender, or any AI capabilities. So it's very bias-free. There's no human person behind that camera identifying that car and that person. It just recognizes numbers, letters, and colors of the vehicles.
Thank you, Chief. And I'm always for bringing more innovative ways to make the city safe. Thanks.
Councilwoman Cobb.
It's always good to make your city safe and for everyone to feel safe. But if I've got to have a camera, I want it to be in the place where the most crime is taking place. Is, is that not what we're looking at? Am I kind of off here?
He said he was out.
You did say that I missed it. I was out. Okay. I just want to make sure that we are not pointing fingers or saying this, and no matter what, I just got to hear it. Thank you. I need to stay in.
If I could add, I'm sorry, Mayor. If I could add that these cameras are going to be placed on public, on property, not private property.
Oh.
Okay. A lot of people think we can put in these cameras on private property. We're not, we're not going to impede on somebody's fulfillment rights or, you know, intrude on somebody's property and place a camera on there. These things are going to be placed on city-owned properties, public property, and state property. Yes.
Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to ask Chief, or make it clear in terms of the grant, what's the portion of the, of what we'll be paying for?
Yes. Yes, sir. It's a 20% match. So we apply $400,000, and our match is $100,000. And those funds are coming out of our general fund, which our current budget that we have allocated, and our state seizure funds.
So we won't be paying $488,250?
$400,000 is coming from the state of Texas on a reimbursement purpose.
Thank you. I just want to make that clear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, sir. So you touched on a couple of things as far as what you see. I think that was the biggest question that I had, was what do you guys see when you're looking at the reader? And I think you touched on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you mind just stating it again, just as far as what you guys see when you...
The cameras are bias-free. So that means that the camera only captures numbers, letters, and colors of the vehicles, and the make and model.
Thank you. And then, thank you for touching on the grants available. Now, there's an annual fee, so you have the initial setup, obviously, you know, that's always the most, the big bulk of it. And there's an annual fee, which I think is not nominal, right? So it's a, it's a, it's, I don't know what that rate is for us, but does that come through grant as well each year? Or how do we, what does that look like? Do we know what the annual cost is?
That's the all-in price for the installation and the LTE service for the phone. That's everything we have to pay.
Everything.
So there's no additional costs. There's no service agreement. That'll be it.
Okay. Now, it's important that we give our, you know, our first responders the tools that you need in your, your toolbox. But when I was looking at the research, and I don't know if the gentleman can confirm this, or if you have those statistics, but I think it's important to know that there's a lot of state agencies that are, PDs that are reporting like 70% reduction in some areas of particular types of crimes, right?
Correct.
So are you showing, is that confirmed that you see that there has been a good reduction with the use of this particular service in different types of crimes? And what would they be?
Right. Many cities around Texas, around the nation, have shown a drop in, in violent crime and motor vehicle thefts by using the Flock camera systems. So, and Mr. Cutler, do you have any information you could add to that?
Hello. Thank you, guys.
Good afternoon, sir.
My name is Kevin Cutler, and I'm with Flock Safety.
Thank you.
And just like to add that it's not only in use for violent offenders, stolen vehicles, but it's also, can be used in amber alerts, silver alerts, things along those lines as well. And we are seeing a very significant decrease in crime, and these Flock cameras are actually solving 12% of all crimes nationwide at this point. And our goal is to just increase that number every single day. And another thing I wanted to bring up also was, we just don't sell to law enforcement only. So we also have a commercial side and a HOA side. So Lowe's, Home Depot, Buc-E's, I believe HEB, and like Academy, those are a few of our customers that are on the commercial side, as well as, you know, any mom-and-pop business that wants to be involved as well. So, and then I also mentioned the HOAs, Mud Districts. I'm unsure if there's any Mud Districts in Colleen, but in Harris County and Travis County, there's quite a few as well. So what's the, the benefit of that is it does add more cameras in neighborhoods, and as well as giving the police just more eyes and ears out in the public as well.
And then the data storage was the next question. So the information, is it on a, how is that stored? Where is it stored? How do they access? If they need to go back to something on a particular, what is, in general, what does that look like?
Yes. It's a cloud-based stores service, and so they can access it from a window of only 30 days. So again, we also want to continue to put privacy first. So on that 31st day, whatever it was back then, is permanently deleted, which we don't have access, and that they will not have access anymore. It is completely permanently deleted.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Chief Lopez, whatever mechanism, mechanism that is legal that we can use to prevent
crime and to keep our city safe, I'm all for it, as long as, you know, it's legal. I know there are some concerns about the Fourth Amendment, but I've always had the philosophy, we don't break the law, we don't have to worry about the law looking for us. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25030, consider a memorandum resolution approving the appointment of an executive director of development services.
Council, Mrs. McDaniel has the next two items. Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As stated, I'm here with my first item with regards to the appointment of the executive director of development services. As many of you know, Mr. Revel vacated this position on December 12th, 2024, and we posted the job for 30 days beginning on December 13th. We received nine qualified applicants. Those applicants were screened, and we interviewed three candidates on February the 7th. It was a panel that interviewed those candidates. And from those interviews, the selection, the selected candidate was Ms. Wallace Mesher. Ms. Mesher has served with Development Services Arena for more than 10 years, the vast majority of that being in Texas municipalities. Ms. Mesher received her Bachelor's of Science in Architecture from Catholic University of America, and her Master of Fine Arts in Historic Preservation from Savannah College of Art and Design. She also obtained her Congress for New Urbanism Accreditation in December of 2016. And therefore, I am in front of you tonight recommending that the city council approve the city manager's appointment of Ms. Wallace Mesher as the City of Colleen's Executive Director of Development Services. She is also in the audience.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to say that I think Ms. Mesher will make a great planner for the City of Colleen. I got to know Ms. Mesher when I served on planning and zoning. Very knowledgeable, very workable, and all, someone who always made herself available to discuss planning-related matters. She'll oversee code enforcement, building inspections, as well as the planning division and the implementation of the very important 2040 Comprehensive Plan. I would just be remiss to say that our development service director, it's important that that individual maintains a positive working relationship with our developer and home builder community. That relationship can easily be strained, but we must continue to ensure that we move forward as a community with that relationship. It's apparent that folks know that the City of Colleen is, is open for business. So with that said, I'm very much in support and looking forward to having Ms. Mesher serve the City of Colleen as our executive director for development services. Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25031, consider a memorandum resolution approving the appointment of the city engineer as a department head.
As stated, this is for the appointment of the city engineer as a department head. Along the same vein, when Mr. Revel vacated his position on December 6th of 2024, an internal reorganization was recommended, transitioning the engineering section out of development services and designating it as a standalone department. This recommendation also included moving the GIS or the Geographical Information Systems Division from IT to engineering, as well as moving the BPAT-FOG program from the Water and Sewer Division underneath the Engineering Department as well. This reorganization would designate the city engineer as the department head for the Engineering Department upon approval by the City Council. So staff is recommending that the city council approve the city manager's appointment of Mr. Andrew Zager's city engineer as the department head of the city's newly established engineering department.
Thank you. Mr. Zager gets around. He's an extraordinary leader. I'm glad that this is presented to us. He deserves to be a director.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I don't have so much to say about the engineer, because I don't know him that well. I'm kidding. No, Mr. Zager is great as an engineer to work with. But to get to the point, when I first seen this come across Adias, it was, I wasn't clear on why this was a great idea for the city now, right? So what I did was I was able to reach out to Mr. Reynolds, who's department works in direct alignment with Engineering Department. So if we could bring Mr. Reynolds out for a moment, I think it's important for him to kind of further qualify the importance of this position and why it's timely. Thank you.
All right, sir, to answer your question, Mr. Zager's is, I would say I've been with the city for 11 years and probably hands down the best city engineer we've had. The department has grown, as Ms. McDaniel just explained, we've added pieces to it to make it a little bit larger, so it has grown over the last couple of months. But Mr. Zager's has a vision for what that department should be. That department handles a multitude of contracts for road reconstructions, construction workforce, the community center, EOC, new fire station fires can be rebuilt, things of that nature. I think right now, if we looked at the total dollar amount, you're probably, with Chaparral Road included, probably over $250 million with the projects that he's currently overseeing. With that being said, taking that layer of extra approval away from that and letting Mr. Zager's have that approval authority to move projects through the system is, is going to focus more on the priorities that this council has set for engineering and for the city. And it stops the grinding of having that extra layer over him. Mr. Zager's come here, he briefed his council, pretty much all the projects, you hear from him on those projects, whether he worked for me, Mr. Revel, or whoever, he's going to be up here because he's the subject matter expert when it comes to engineering for the City of Colleen. So I think it only makes sense. The city is growing. We're growing as a staff. We're expanding our capabilities, and it just, it just makes sense that it's time to move in this direction. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm not going to belabor the point. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say that having worked with Mr. Zager's from the beginning, sir, I just, the level of professionalism in dealing with our stakeholders and answering, and this various stakeholders, the community partners, things like that, watching your level of professionalism and dealing with them, I think is paramount. It's been, it's been a great experience. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to congratulate both of you. I think that it's always good to see that we are hiring from internally. I know that especially for Mrs. Meiser there, we looked and we went out. Was that like a nationwide search?
For the position?
Yeah.
Yeah, the position was posted. We handled the recruiting internally, but it was posted on several professional sites that had nationwide reach with regards to recruitment.
Yeah, no, and it's good that, to know that, you know, we have the best qualified candidates for those positions. So congratulations to both of you. I know that it's tough to be a department head, especially Mr. Zager's there engineering, because, you know, you get beat up a lot sometimes. It's Meiser, too. So both of you guys got tough positions. But I just wanted to ask on the engineer, we're moving that, is there any staff personnel that moves under Mr. Zager's or are there...
Yes. So he does currently have support staff that reported to him additionally. Those two divisions would be considered support staff with GIS and BPAT-FOG programs.
So those will all fall under him now?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Adams. Hi. Everybody else had already touched on other stuff I wanted to say. I just wanted to point out that on Mr. Zager's is a no-cost move, because I don't see any cost in there. So that's, want to make sure that's out there. Folks, we're not paying any extra money for, got it. And, you know, I understand it's a promotion for Ms. Mesher. Thanks.
Hi, Mr. Zager. Hi, Ms. Mesher. Congratulations to both of you. Just recently, we, we had a loan with me. I know going to the spots and looking at land and understanding and ensuring that we always take up the constituent, it has really meant a lot to me, especially the last, this last weekend, spending 45 minutes with me and learning. So I know if you have that patience with everyone, ensuring that every constituent is being treated fair, you're going to be excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Solomon and Aberes, y'all have any comments? Councilmember Solomon.
Just say congratulations. It's good working with both of you.
Councilmember Aberes.
Mayor, I'll just echo what everybody said. Thank y'all for both of your, all the expertise that you bring to Team Colleen and all that you do for, for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Team Colleen. Yes, I like that, Team Colleen. Thank you, Mrs. McDaniel. Madam Secretary.
RS 25032, consider a memorandum resolution ordering RFP 2510, Colleen Civic and Conference Center Mixed Beverage Service to let us do the cooking in the amount of $105,000 annually. Center Mixed Beverage Service to Let Us Do the Cooking in the Amount of $105,000 annually.
Thank you, Ms. McNair.
Good afternoon. This, I would like to, for the record, introduce Amanda Wilkinson, who's the Director of the K3C. She's here to provide any answers to any additional questions that may come up. So background, the City of Colleen obtained a mixed beverage license from the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission for the Civic and Conference Center complex in 2005. In 2011, the city obtained mixed beverage catering permits to provide mixed beverage services to other city facilities. This includes the Activities and Art Center as well. The current management agreement for our mixed beverage services is what Let Us Do the Cooking LLC. They have provided this service to the city since March 12th of 2019. The mixed beverage RFP was advertised on the City of Colleen website, January 6, 2025, then closed January 2020, 22, 2025. The notice of the bid opportunity was advertised in the Colleen Daily Herald on January 6th and 13th of this year. Two proposals were received, one from Let Us Do the Cooking and the other from a bartender. Request for the proposal, city staff evaluated the proposals based on five criteria: compensation to the City of Colleen, concept for mixed beverage and products to be offered, experience and qualifications, business plan for the operation of mixed beverage service, and also references. Since the last RFP for this, there have been significant improvements to the City of Colleen's mixed beverage operation, two being significant changes were implemented at the start of fiscal year 2025 to streamline operations and ensure continued progress in the delivery of service. Number one was the inventory spreadsheet. The inventory spreadsheet was redesigned and implemented in October of 2024. It corrected broken formulas and inaccurate calculations from the original spreadsheet. Those formulas and calculations would provide inaccurate numbers, which would then present as if there was more or less of certain beverages and more or less of certain losses. So Amanda took the initiative to reach out to the Finance Department and work directly with them on correcting that spreadsheet. Enhanced calculation methods, adjusted inventory loss calculations to reflect wholesale costs instead of sale price, ensures, shrinkage reflects actual financial loss rather than potential revenue, and signature drink tracking. We introduced calculations for the value of the signature drinks and reduce the human error by improving formula accuracy and data interest, data entry consistency. Industry standards, the average cost of goods sold is typically 15 to 20%. Previously, K3C had not set a target percentage for the vendor. For fiscal year 2025, a 20% maximum was set for cost of goods sold for all alcohol purchases, and vendors have been instructed, which our current one is to Let Us Do the Cooking, to meet this benchmark monthly, and progress is being made to achieve compliance. Unexplained loss control, industry benchmarks for unexplained losses, i.e. I'm sorry, e.g., spillage, overpouring, or theft are 2% to 5%. Since implementing the updated inventory controls in October, monthly losses have consistently remained within this 2% to 5% range, demonstrating improved accountability. Inventory adjustments, we've reduced our beer options from 13 to six brands. Remaining inventory will be sold but not reordered. Wine inventory has been streamlined to maintain a focused selection without sacrificing customer satisfaction and preference, hard liquor or spirits. We eliminated five additional spirits from the inventory with plans for, to further reduce options while still offering a diverse range of beverages to meet customer needs. These changes aim to reduce overstock, streamline inventory, and maintain high-quality customer experience. Staff recommends City Council approve the acceptance of the mixed beverage service proposal from Let Us Do the Cooking LLC and authorize the City Manager or his designated to enter into an agreement for an initial term of three years, with an option to extend up to three additional one-year renewal terms. And we are available for questions.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
OR 25005, consider an ordinance declaring an unopposed candidate and canceling the May 3, 2025 general election in District 3. And this is my item. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
The Texas Election Code provides that an election in a single-member district shall be canceled if the candidate is unopposed and there are no write-in candidates. On Thursday, February 20th, 2025, the city secretary certified to the city council that Nina Cobb was unopposed for election to the office of Councilmember District 3, and that no candidate's name was to be placed on a list of write-in candidates for the position of Councilmember District 3. An ordinance has been prepared canceling the general election in District 3 and declaring that Nina Cobb is elected to office and shall be issued a certificate of election following the time the election would have been canvassed. Ms. Cobb's name will still appear on the District 3 ballot as an, as an unopposed candidate declared elected. District 3 residents will also have the City of Colleen Special Election on the ballot for Proposition B, the bond election, along with Colleen Independent School District and Central Texas College races. Therefore, the two polling locations will remain operational on Election Day in District 3. And staff recommends the City Council approve the ordinance canceling the May 3, 2025 general election in District 3 and declaring Nina Cobb elected to office effective at the time of canvassing the results of the May 3, 2025 District 1, 2, and 4 general election. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to make a quick statement, and I wanted to just congratulate Nina Cobb on running unopposed. Some would be quick to downplay such an event, but this is very significant relating to a district of 40,000-plus people who had the opportunity to vote or run. I shared the same privilege in 2023, and I'm just happy for you because it's more significant than light will be put on it. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Boyd, because it was when the dates that you could file, that was open. If you wanted to bill write-in, that was open. So everyone had the opportunity. If you went on our website, or if you know anything about Facebook, website, any social media outlet, or not a media outlet, it was always talking about the upcoming election for 2025. So that's a good point that you made. It was open to everyone. And congratulations to you, Councilwoman Cobb. Madam Secretary. Oh, Councilwoman Cobb, you want to say something?
Sure. First, yes, it was unopposed, but I believe in our district. I believe in the work. I believe in our citizens and our constituents, and I believe in the fairness of every man and woman in that district. No matter what it may appear at times, Ms. Cobb is working a butt-off to ensure that we get the things that we need. And I tell you what, it comes with an excellent staff. I have to say thank you to the staff. Thank you, Michael. Thank you to this council. And you know what? Thank you to my almighty God.
Madam Secretary.
PH 25009, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Richard and Catherine Datamo, case number Z 2437, to rezone approximately 2.161 acres out of the J. Goslin survey, abstract number 343, 4 through 10, from A agricultural district to AR1 agricultural single-family residential district. The subject property is locally addressed as 945 Schrader Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mrs. Mesher.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is a request to rezone approximately 2.161 acres from agricultural to AR1. The subject property is located at 945 Schrader Road. If approved, the applicant intends to develop a single-family home on the property. In accordance with Section 31158B, no structure can be erected on any lot in the agricultural district if it is less than three acres. For this reason, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property to AR1, which has a minimum lot size of one acre. The red star on your screen indicates the location of the subject property. As you can see, it's well south of Chaparral Road. This is an aerial view of the property, so you can see it's currently undeveloped. And again, the property owner is just intending to build a single-family home on the property. This is a view of the property facing east from Schrader Road, view of the adjacent property to the south, view facing west down Schrader Road, and a view facing north from Schrader Road. Property is located within a limited growth area on the growth sector map, which includes areas of the, the far, within the farthest extent of the city and are primarily large homesteads, farmland, and agricultural property and open space. The rural estate place type is characterized by large lots with single-family homes and rural settings and allows up to 100% residential uses. Staff finds that this request supports the Comprehensive Plan recommendations listed on your screen, NH3, which speaks to diversifying housing mix. Ingress and ingress, the property is through passage easement at the end of Schrader Road, which is a 60-foot wide right-of-way. Water is available to the property, and wastewater services are not available, so the property will require a septic tank. And with that, staff is of the determination that the applicant's request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and that the request is consistent with the character of the surrounding area. We notified five surrounding property owners regarding this request, and we've received one response in opposition to the request citing concerns about infrastructure. This is the notification map for this property. And with that, staff's recommendation is for approval of the request as presented. And the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 27th also recommended approval by a vote of 5 to 0. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Citizen comments on the agenda item, four minutes with one minute time allotted for City Council to respond with a statement or explanation without engaging in dialogue. Mr. Price, you have four minutes.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor, yeah, so this is kind of fast because I got to talk to some of the people outside. So the flock cameras, right? I already spoke with a gentleman that, that does the flock cameras, and a lot of the questions were brought up. There are still issues, right, that are concerning with the, with the Fourth Amendment under the Carpenter doctrine. I don't want to see us buying something that's going to be taken away like the red light cameras, right? We're going to be spending a lot of money out, up front, and then all of a sudden we find out that it is against constitutional right because they changed whatever doctrine somewhere across the country, as they've already done in Virginia. So I just, we, we need to, you know, I think we need, we need the system. I can guarantee you that. It, it's a valuable system, but, you know, we're getting close to a police state. So, you know, do you want to get bitten by the dragon while he's trying to save you? I don't know. You know, it's something to think about. But it is definitely, I don't see any other alternative right now with the amount of crime that we have in, in Colleen, especially since I live in a high-crime area. So... I'm going to go down to the, the beverage service to Let Us Do the Cooking. Now, there is a city employee that operates that, that's getting that grant or getting the, the business, right? I'm not sure who, who their name is, but they're, they're actually a city employee. It's on the documents, but it wasn't announced here tonight that the city employee, who that was. But the, the documents say that there is a city employee that's making this bid. I was just curious who that was. Another thing is, is that if they don't know how to do this, it seems like they don't know how to track their, their alcohol. There is a system that you can even get for your iPhone. It's called ParTender. It measures everything super fast, super quick, every night, every day, so we can actually lower that 2% to 5% loss due to, you know, accidents and theft. We can lower that theft rather fast with, with this basic system, right, to add. So if there's a recommendation I could, you know, point out to help our city save money, that would be that right there. And the last but not least, congratulations to Mrs. Cobb. But just to remind the City Council that it wasn't 40,000 people that put her there, right? Last time, it was roughly around 2,500. So I think it just says to the city's announcement of, get out the vote, right? We really need to get out the vote. We need to tell the citizens that we have an election coming up. I, you know, I haven't seen anything anywhere across the city that says we got an election coming. I talked to people, and nobody knows that we're voting for anybody. So that's something I wanted to add out there. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, where do I start? Just recently, I made a statement and it said some, some would be quick to downplay. And I'll leave it there. I did want to mention that as far regarding the, the program for the license plates readers, that's a grant that we've, that we're accepting or have accepted. It's not going to be city funds utilized to purchase the cameras, the readers. Sorry. 20%, let me make correction, 20%. I want to get that incorrect. Other thing, too, Communication Job is doing a great job. I was walking a building yesterday, and someone stopped me regarding the election based on the coverage they seen on the city's website. So folks are definitely informed, and I'm excited about how far we've come in communicating progress in the city from our communications department. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Brown, you have four minutes.
I must say, I'm astounded by this council, and not in a good way. There is a fundamental problem with your structure, and you just proved it tonight because you made a motion of direction, which is an action, without any input whatsoever from the citizens. So congratulations on that. You may dislike me, but I have given you the easiest solution to EDC and chamber problem before. Restructure the board. But first, why would we give up a seat on, from the council? KADC is a huge factor in how our city grows. So y'all really don't want to do anything more than what is minimally required, do you? I hope none of you ever want to run for higher office in the future because it's a lot more work. Take off two of the Greater Colleen Chamber members and the three Colleen Industrial Foundation members. Yes, we can remove them even with a note due because we don't have mortgage companies deciding what we do with our properties when they're mortgaged. Add a representative from IBCC, the Hispanic Chamber, the Korean Merchants Association, the Downtown Merchants Association, and the Planning and Zoning Chair. There's your nine members. When you add the three council members, it's fair, it's balanced across the board, and everyone has an equal vote instead of one-tenth of a vote, which is what you just gave to IBCC, which is an insult. Making someone an ex officio doesn't give them the vote. Expanding it by one seat allows them to be outvoted every single time. And to get this partnership for zero dollars toward operations is a deal. Greater Colleen Chamber Commerce gets well over $500,000 of our money annually just to pay salaries and manage three personnel. Take $80,000 away from the museum, give that to IBCC. IBCC markets and brings more revenue to Colleen than the museum does, who can't show us a single dollar worth of ROI. Take $105,000 out of your training and travel budget. Or take the salary for the fourth full-time equivalent person out of the city manager's budget, since there are only three employees in the city manager's office for the past year and a half. If you want to have, if you only want to have them bring in a grocery store, then I hope they charge $250,000 for that service alone. If they fill all the businesses in downtown, then I hope you get rid of Ms. Kitio and give him that salary because that would be doing her job. As far as the golf course, how is the golf course going to cover a $3 million bond when they're making less than $250,000 a year? When you add interest, that will be 100% of the $200,000 profit every year. When you add interest, that will be 100% of the $200,000 profit every year, meaning that our tax dollars will indeed have to supplement any bonds. If there is an economic downturn, it's pervade that recreation drops for a lot of current financial unknowns. In regards to Encore lawsuit, this firm has already pervade that it can't beat Encore. Hi. How much have we spent on this lawsuit so far? The projected deficit that scared you so much, you couldn't form, fund, and organization that is pervade to bring the revenue. Is it wise or responsible to take on the cost of this responsibility? If, and that is a big if, we win, will we be, we will be required to hire an outsourced company to maintain all the streetlights or pay for expensive specialized equipment and hire highly skilled and specialized, high-salary employees to do it? That's on top of the cost we would pay Encore for the purchase. We are out of room for bonds, so where would these millions of dollars come from when we can't find 250,000? Let's give this up before we get further behind.
Michael Fernino, you have four minutes.
All right, to address many of the items here, I've had to revamp my remarks. With regard to funding to IBCC, I can't overstate how much I support the IBCC. It's my opinion that KEDC, and by default, the Chamber of Commerce should be defunded and half of what you give to KEDC should go to IBCC. I mean, this man is articulate. He comes with a plan and yet you find reasons all the time not to give him a dime. With regard to item number five, and this is not personal, this is just business, I can't object strongly enough to the appointment for the planning developer. All right? And it's, it's already a foregone conclusion. The paper's been reporting it all week, council to a point, as if it was already foregone. But my objection is well-founded, and I'll detail this as to how I arrived at my opinion. This body has a history of poor decision-making without a clear understanding of consequences or considering previous bad decisions. Before you gavel and claim it's not true and then the weak trope of you're being attacked and the only person here who's been attacked is me, twice in this chamber, matter of record. And, oh, by the way, if that ever happens again, I will not be as passive. I'm out of cheeks to turn. So why is this item even on the agenda, presuming the mayor and not the city manager is even controlling the agenda anymore? Of the few duties that you do have, you fail to perform them. I've seen that lack of courage, even cast a tie-breaking vote. So why would it be a stretch for me to believe this decision on the agenda is yours? Using critical thinking, I note that person being considered lacks the qualification and training as job described. Check the resume. Also, she was previously fired from the city of Hutto. This is not the first person who was fired for cause by the same city and then we eagerly hired. That last person that was fired from cause from Hutto that we hired, went on to a follow-on position, was summarily fired with cause within a year. Is there a chance that other cities know something that you don't? And who's recommending this approval? A city manager who was fired with cause from his last position from a different city? Then I examine what passes for leadership sitting in front of me. I look at the core of those and what allows us to continue for decisions that benefit the citizens the least and this body, staff, and your friends the most. I object to this body making decisions in the face of facts, facts that nobody, no matter how much the mayor plays for the camera, waves her arms like a sorceress and utters "it's just not true," is quite the opposite. I question the legitimacy of what passes for leadership and management here with regard to all this. Despite the laughable fact check that the Herald did in particular, no matter what you say, Mayor, I have your complete military record here, corroborated by NPRC and US Army Human Resources Command.
Mr. Fernino.
I'm questioning the process.
I do not have a problem with you talking about anything that's on the agenda.
This is on the agenda, the decision-making goes into your decisions.
This has to be tiresome, that this the only thing you constantly do, come up here and attack me. My question is why? What are you benefiting? That's your first one, Mr. Cochran. So.
My time is, you've led 15 seconds of my time.
You please stay to the agenda.
I am.
Let's go. Get to the agenda.
Are you prepared to say that both, that both of those entities are wrong and the documents, as you would say it, are good enough? No. Shame on you to your left, to your left and right for refusing to investigate any of this. I sent an email to the Mayor Pro Tem and my council member.
Mr. Cochran, get back on the agenda.
Madam Mayor, you play this trump all the time. Anyway, instead of being standard bearers moving forward, you're going to be pall bearers. Can you read that? Yeah. 7,054.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Cochran, come on, your time. You have four minutes.
You owe me 30 seconds, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Boyd. That's your first one and Mr. Fernino, quit disrupting the meeting. Councilmember Boyd. That's just the camera. Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We just, we're in the process of appointing a new executive director for Development Services, and I was just referencing the resume again, and I just want to point out to the public that experiences a planner with the city of League City, experiences an associate planner with the city of Lockhart, a senior planner for the city of Hutto, senior planner for the city of Colleen, director of Development Services for the city of Burnett, director of planning for the city of Colleen, assistant director of Development Services for the city of Colleen, and pending, the director for Development Services for the city of Colleen. Very thorough resume, as can be referenced, and again, I look forward to bringing her on board. Thank you.
Mr. Cochran, you have four minutes.
First, I'd like to talk about the IBCC funding. They had me at hello. They need the money. They asked for money last year, you put them off. They're asking for money this year, you're putting them off. Now, they have to wait till the next fiscal year to receive any kind of dime from the city council. That's crazy. That's why I agree and support this request. Give them the money. They do what's done at the Colleen Economic Development Corporation and the Colleen's Chamber of Commerce. They need and deserve the money. Quit putting fake promises in front of them. Let's look at the golf course. Looks like your president, general manager of the golf course left. Because in the history of the golf course, January of 2024, they had no quorum to discuss the addition or taking of the land for their little putting range. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board in July, when they met, they didn't have a chairman. That position was vacant, so they couldn't discuss it there. In October 14th, 2024, they elected a new board member, so it was not discussed there. January 2025, it was not discussed there. There was no quorum. So my question to the city council is, how are we giving land that's supposed to be designated as a park to the golf course? The golf course is not a park. According to the old city plan and the documents, it says that a park has trees, walking trails, and covered picnic areas. Your driving range does not have that. So I don't know how the general manager is accepting land that should have been designated as a public park. That's what it was designated along with two other ones. It amazes me what the illegal things they do here on the city council behind closed doors. Sad but true. Again, this was not on any kind of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board agenda to give them the land. It was mysteriously donated to them behind closed doors. People should look at that. Very shady deal. As related to the golf course itself, I said this before, sell it. If it's making a profit, sell it. Use that money and give it to the IBCC. Hey, other money, like I mentioned before, you got travel money. You're not bringing back anything. Stop your travel, give it to them. City manager, you make a lot of money. IBCC needs funding. How about some of your money? Now, let's look at the next thing. Unopposed candidate for District Three. She's only unopposed because two people backed out. She's not running unopposed based on what she's done. Currently, District Three has zero projects with a shovel in the ground. I guess she's proud of that. She attends conferences over at Atlanta, Tampa, Washington. She has brought zero business back in the last four years. This former nurse has done nothing to improve the lives of Colleen city staff. For example, the sanitation department has requested that they be reimbursed for life-threatening tetanus and typhoid shots. They have not been reimbursed. Again, former nurse not helping the city staff. Also, the city council has said that there are four young people and teenagers, yet they voted against the construction of a new teen center as well as a new library. That was supposed to go in District Three, but District Three is silent on that. She voted for not funding it. Surprise, surprise. I do see her around town, though. She is at the photo opportunities in the newspaper. After that, I've never seen her. Her Facebook page, as well as the other city council members, do not allow comments. They do not return phone calls. They do not return emails. It's very sad. I thought I sent two emails about questions I had for tonight on this golf course, but they really weren't asked. So once again, you send emails and there's no progress. They say this city is future-focused. No, it's like financial failures to me. Just want to say, Mayor, enjoy your trip to another conference in Washington next week when you speak. Have a nice time traveling at the taxpayers' expense. Again, again, traveling to Seattle, Tampa, Atlanta, and other places. Maybe that's where you get that 2.4 million deficit. It's based on all the travel and all the misspending. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And to the residents, I will not be going to Washington anytime in the next month. Let's correct that. I know some more things I wanted to correct. There's no city employee making a bid for anything. Mr. Kegel, do you know anything about the sanitation requesting reimbursement for shots?
I don't know. This has been brought up a dozen times or more in this.
And that's not true. Oh, I didn't think so. Okay, moving on. I don't think we voted against, did we vote against a teen center or a library? Not on this council, so that's not true. So base, Mr. Cochran, that's your last warning. Please leave the chamber and leave the premises. We taking a five-minute break. So I would like to call this meeting back to order. Apologize for the, to the residents for what you witnessed. It was not my intent. I don't ever like to put anybody out of the council meeting, but it takes a lot. And, and, and everyone has a right to freedom of speech, but you must stay on the agenda. And attacking me about my military records, which has no bearing on me being on the city council, happens prior to me even being on the city council, and also the information is untrue. And it really worries me when somebody, I was a little concerned and a little frightened when I heard the word pall berry, because it's not the first time that a threat in that manner, whether it's through Facebook, whether it's through emails, text messages, or phone calls to me personally and also council members, that that is a concern. We're not here to play games. It's all about business and it's about the city business. But there are some things that I need to address, make a correction on. And Mrs. Messier, it was embarrassing to me. A person has a right to say whatever they want to say, but you wasting your time every other Tuesday using this podium to get attention, to be on any media outlet, to attack us constantly. And that's just the whole game that people play. She was, she was appointed by Mr. Kegel. She went through the interview process and she was selected, and it's not fair to anyone, whether it's someone that we never met before or it's a city employee that's within that get hired, to be discredited and attacked in that manner because she has to work with the, with the agencies and the developers and the builders in other cities for the city of Colleen because she represent us. That was all uncalled for. But he had the right to say it because that item was on the agenda. And that's the thin line between I'm going to attack you, I'm going to jump back on the agenda, but she didn't deserve that. Nor do any council member deserve personal attacks. And you can attack us on, on how we vote and what we say according to the agenda, but personal, it's no place in the chamber for that. And that's my personal opinion. And Mr. Kegel would like to make a correction. Mr. Kegel? And Chief, I need you to come up over here.
Yes, ma'am. As regard to the Colleen Chamber of Commerce, we do not send any money to the Colleen Chamber of Commerce. We have said that repeatedly. It is false. It is the Colleen Economic Development Corporation. We do not pay for any Chamber of Commerce activities. They have an audit. You can see where all the money goes, and it's very straightforward. Secondly, we cannot use hotel motel tax money. That is the money that goes to the museum for advertising the museum to run a Chamber of Commerce. That would be illegal. Some Chamber of Commerce's get hotel motel money to run a convention and visitors bureau, not to run their Chamber of Commerce. But we have our own convention and visitors bureau. So suggesting that the $80,000 that goes to the Mounted Warfare Museum could go to the IBCC would be illegal. And I'll just end it there.
Thank you, sir. Chief Lopez, it was stated that flock safety camera systems is against the law. Is that?
No, that's not correct. The carbon law applies to cell phone technology and how police officers in the past has obtained cell phone data without a warrant from cell phone towers throughout the nation. That hasn't applied to flock technology. That's a different type of technology.
Okay, thank you so much. And the last thing I would like to address, I noticed that a lot of people, I am for IBCC. I do believe that they should be paid for service. I'm big on the grocery store. It takes the council to vote on that. But however, and it goes back to the council, once you put stuff out there in the atmosphere, it's our responsibility to follow up with it because they do provide the services that we need. So we are 100% for IBCC, but we have to follow the guidelines. And that is to provide a service we need. The grocery store is one of those services we are desperate need, and all council can support paying for that service. There are some other services that I saw on that list that I would personally would like to help out the city, especially with the downtown small businesses. So we are for IBCC, and I just hope that we can just set up some kind of, like councilwoman call, say, a meeting so we can just break down that 250,000 and see how we, we can, they can provide a service with, for us, and we can work together, especially, like I said, the grocery store. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Thank you, madam, and you did cover most of it. And then also, Mr. Kegel, thank you for addressing that because it is important that, to me at least, that people understand that we are in support of IBC, no doubt. I thought it was very clear about lodging my support for that. But to Councilmember Cigar's point, as we start to move forward, the process also becomes very important. This is the first time that anyone, this particular chamber has come before and said, hey, let's expand this publicly. Okay, this is the first time. Let's figure this out. Well, there's a process that has to take place, and what does that look like? Where does the pool come from so there's a sustainable resource for the future? And we need to figure that out, and we need to make sure that, not only now, but also in the future, that we have that diversity on, in representation in the EDC. So we are in support of it, but it is important that we go through the process as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad you mentioned that because there are other organizations that have come to us, like the Korean Association, different organizations that we have met with that want us to host their events and want to participate within the city. And as we go into that process of that bylaws with KEDC, because they have to buy into this too, the council have to take all that into consideration moving forward. With that being said, Mrs. Holly. Good afternoon, ma'am. And I apologize for y'all's time that y'all had to wait. You have four minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, and I'll be quick. I'm glad to hear that you all are in support of IBCC because as a member, I just want to give you a little bit of my experience with them firsthand as a small business owner here in the city of Colleen. They keep me informed of changes to laws and policies that impact my business. That's one of the main things that they do for our small businesses. Also, they keep us informed of Also, they keep us informed of opportunities, he mentioned it, and the amount of economic impact they have in here in the city of Colleen in terms of, um, grants and contracts that are available to us small businesses. Not only that, uh, because of their relationship with DSDT, I was able to take advantage of a scholarship program and take a AI certification course, which has helped me grow my business and expand my services. Um, and then lastly, just the partnership as a small business owner and the networking within IBCC, Mr. Russell specifically provided mentorship to me and helped me just in my business, and as well as the network afforded me some opportunities to be able to serve the IBCC community. So it's good to hear that you all continue to support the organization, because they do so much for us small business owners. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I agree with you. Mr. Carl Webb. Good afternoon, good, good evening, sir, you have four minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. Um, yes, my name is Carl Webb, I am originally from St. Louis, Missouri, I'm a veteran. Uh, like probably the majority of people here, we are all probably transplant, and similar to our military, we probably are the only military on the face of earth that everybody is from somewhere else, and we make it work. So I really commend the city of Colleen for being able to have so many people from some, so many other places that are passionate in making this work, and I know that there are success ahead for us. Uh, would like to say that in reference to the impact of the IBC in the city of Colleen, the IBCC is necessary. I feel like we are in a state of emergency, and this is a can that we can't keep kicking down the road. Uh, I've been a citizen here for, since two thousand and five, and again, like most of you all, uh, I have to make, uh, have to make this city run. Uh, I'm a transplant, like I said before, and I know that there's only a small faithful few that do make the city run. I've served and supported most of the entities that help in bringing success to all this positive to the city of Colleen. I am a member of the IBCC, and I've served as the Economic Development Chair, Co-Chair for the past four years. The mission and the effort of the, the mission and the efforts of the IBCC certainly live up to the first word, innovation. Uh, Councilmember Boyd mentioned ten years out. This could continue to be, one day, or today could actually be day one, so let's not miss the opportunity, not this opportunity. The AI revolution is upon us, uh, and it should make us all look, um, it should make us look in the mirror at our current level of proficiency, and that alone is grounds for the debt, to declare a state of emergency. You know who you are. From educating our community on technology, especially with the forward-thinking efforts in the classes that pertain to the AI revolution, to the free resource summits in which many of you have participated in and supported, and we thank you for that. The IBCC had an incredible, necessary AI Innovation Week and over five AI two-day workshop that have been inclusive to some of our young teenagers, uh, in the community, as well as some of our members that are even in their late seventies who weren't afraid to take on the challenge. I believe that the blueprint of this brilliant mindset that has started in Central Texas is already going viral. Just add some of our friends in the surrounding areas of Dallas, Fourth Ward, Austin, Houston, Ohio, St. Louis, Atlanta, to name a few, who are calling us for assistance to do some of the same things. The personal professional development has helped me as an entrepreneur, a citizen, and a mentor, uh, creating many relationships with other businesses of all kinds in the city. Working more with our seniors and participating in mentoring students in the KISD, working with four cabosos, our veterans, our Texas workforce, KPD, and our fire departments, and other city entities. Because of the current temperature of our country, I believe that the chamber will become even more necessary promoting relationships, relationship building versus networking. There is a difference. Coach Wilson asked, what does support look like to you? And I believe that it looks like the, the intentional efforts of the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce with the leadership and forward-thinking of Mr. Ronnie Russell and the amazing members that volunteered their efforts. As far as the grocery store needs, uh, that's also a state of emergency situation, and I don't live in that area, but I hope that we could treat it like we do live in that area, and we have family members that live in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also would like to make one more correction on something I said, RS dash twenty-five dash zero three zero, when I made the statement that the individual, that's their business, not their significant other's business. Um, so I wanted to correct that, that's their business only. With that being said, Madam Secretary, consent agenda. Counsel, you have three minutes to speak three times each.
MN twenty-five zero zero six, RS twenty-five zero two nine, RS twenty-five zero three zero, RS twenty-five zero three one, RS twenty-five zero three two, OR twenty-five zero zero five. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance declaring unopposed candidates in the May third, twenty twenty-five, general election, canceling the general election in the district with unopposed candidates, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I need a motion to approve or disapprove the consent agenda. Councilmember Solomon?
Madam Mayor, I approve, I make a motion that we approve the consent items.
Councilmember Boyd?
Second.
All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Motion carries seven to zero. Public hearing. Counsel, you have three minutes to speak three times each.
PH twenty-five zero zero nine. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Richard and Catherine Datamo, case number Z twenty-four thirty-seven, to rezon approximately two point one six one acres out of the Jay Goslin survey, abstract number three forty-three, four through ten, from A agricultural district to AR one agricultural, single-family residential district. The subject property is locally addressed as nine forty-five Schrader Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately two point one six one acres, being out of the Jay Goslin survey, abstract number three forty-three, four through ten, from A agricultural district to AR one agricultural, single-family residential district, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, and providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Counsel, uh, Mrs. Messer, congratulations on your promotion, Mr. Zager, congratulations. I have gone through the slides, would you like for her to go back through? All right. We will now have public hearing, public hearing will be on PH dash twenty-five dash zero zero nine. Public hearing is open, oh, it's applicant here before I, uh, close public hearing. Uh, sir, would you like to say anything before we go into public hearing? Will you please state your name for the record?
Honorable Mayor Richard Adama, council members. I just want to thank you for your time and your consideration. Uh, my wife and I have been looking for a retirement property, I'll be retiring by the end of the year. We have five grandsons within, three of them within walking distance of the property, all of them in Colleen, so we're really looking forward to this. We think we found the perfect property and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, uh, congratulations on your retirement son.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Public hearing is open.
I'm actually in support of this request. It is incremental change like the comp plan calls for. You know, if we wanted an organization like IBCC to market more incremental changes, we could give them hot money restricted to marketing for bringing responsible and sustainable development to the city. I respect the staff and their opinion on this zoning. I don't respect anyone implying that I don't know the budget or how the finance mechanisms work for the city. Since this council decided to approve six hundred houses that don't fit in the comp plan with insufficient existing structure, I'd hope you could support a project that fits into the comp plan and has a ninety-eight percent existing infrastructure solution to support it. That's all.
Public hearing is closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve PH two-five dash zero zero nine.
Councilmember Adams?
Mayor, I second that motion.
Thank you, counsel. All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Motion carries seven to zero. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, VTCA Government Code five-five-one point zero zero one, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the fourth day of March twenty twenty-five at five fifty-two PM, under the following authority, section five-five-one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, the city council will consult with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, agenda item DS two-five zero zero six. I would like to call this meeting back to order at six thirty-seven. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Councilmember Solomon said he, so move, and Councilmember Adams second it. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
All opposed, okay. Uh, council meeting adjourned.